All right, Commissioner's meeting agenda Wednesday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. All three commissioners are present. And we'll start off with public comment. I don't see public here, so I think we're gonna keep on moving. So next up would be elected officials. Doug's already had some input this morning. And because we're just talking before we started the meeting about some construction stuff, but. Eli, do you have something?
I just wanna just give an update on the. On the infrastructure rebuild. It's right now, we're going full speed ahead. Already starting to work on cabinets, getting on the equipment installed. And we're hoping that we can get as much of it. I know, I'm gonna get my PT in. No, like I said, I'm very happy with the progress we're going on. Like I said, this, we're gonna be seeing a lot of it going up, and we hope to. Get as much as we can done this year. Right now, they're working in, they're putting down. How do you call it? Platforms, known for where the cabinets, from where the cabinets are gonna be going. A lot of cabinets already next door at a two-way. And equipment going in, so I'm just wanna give an update on that, but things are moving along pretty well.
Okay, thank you. All right, then if nobody else has anything else, then I'm going to move on to schedule an agenda item, master agenda item number eleven sixteen. Victim of Crime Act Vocal Grant Award Agreement. Acts and expected vote to accept and sign the grant agreement and associate documents for the vote grant. For fiscal year twenty-five and from the Department of Justice for fifty thousand dollars, which requires a twelve thousand five hundred in match.
This is for Sarah's with Victim Services. We've had this grant for years and years and years. It says it's fifty thousand dollars, it starts in July, the match is altered by the excess salary that it doesn't cover. If anyone had any questions, we're happy to answer them. And otherwise, we see the votes are set to the scratch yet again.
There are motion?
Second.
Okay. Any, any, any question, any questions? I just, I read it when we, what you have here?
No, it's different.
Okay, then.
Why'd you read the motion?
Yeah, do that.
Voted, voted, voted. Commissioner's Chair John Jack G. Wozmac, J.D.
Oh, better sit down.
Hereby authorized on behalf of the County Justice Department, the Volker.
You speak up, please.
Both are S.F.Y. twenty-five zero seven zero one two four to. June thirtieth, twenty-five period agreement. With the Hampshire Department of Justice and to execute any and all documents, agreements and other instruments and any amendments, revisions and modifications thereto. As he, she may be necessary, desirable or appropriate to affect the purpose of this vote. Yeah, I gotta read both of them.
Yeah, I read that up to you guys. That's what we needed to say, but I don't think you need to say it out loud unless you need to.
I, I'm happy to waive the reading.
I think we could have gone with what I had, but, you know.
That was painful.
But, but. The whole document, yeah. Okay, so Commissioner Wa, Commissioner Wa.
You know, the interesting thing was this several times. That was part-time position and the grant took the whole place. And, and the staff did about victim witness was. You had actually have this position. Provided they were grant funds to pay for it. Well, the grant funds have kind of dwindled, although the position has expanded. And we still have the position even though not required to, to them, kind of interesting. But, but I think going forward, what's that?
Now, we have three of them.
Yeah, yeah.
They're actually going onto four.
Yeah, so. It, it actually will be interesting to see. In the longer term, what the interplay is between restorative justice. And the victim witness ones. I'm not sure that going forward as. Restorative justice matures or evolves. That we need them. I, I think one could go together. I think that was a comment that. One of the judges made, she, you know, almost two years ago, three years ago. That separating. Separating that support role, whatever we call it. From the county attorney's office. Would likely result in more success and more participation all around.
I think we ought to schedule some commentary sometime for those two people to get together and.
Well, well, you know, I think it's worth looking at, yeah, just to kind of. See how the two. Work against each other or towards each other or with each other, whatever it's supposed to be. Well, I do think it's evolution. I don't know. But they're just popular.
Well, and, and I think with what Patrick has done early on to grow the program, the way he's doing. It's only gonna give more credibility to that evolution if it doesn't, does occur.
I, I believe that restorative justice could be a more successful, more appropriate and more. Trauma-informed approach. Than the, I'll say the archaic. Version of victim witness.
And all, and all you have to really do is look across the river to Vermont, they actually funded through the state. And the level of the program across the state of Vermont, not just, just in Brattleboro.
Right. I mean, not, not that, not that, not that the victim witness is helpful, but I think that. Just like I said, it grows evolutionary from an intellectual, from a general societal policy response, restorative justice, I think. Is, is, is future. Appropriately so.
Thinking of restorative justice, for the last couple of years, according to the census, the. The number of clients involved in restorative justice had been typically zero to three. And, and two weeks ago, on February twenty-eighth, it was three. Last week, it was fourteen. This week is, it's, it's fourteen as well. Plus the community, restorative justice programs, which I presume are through the high school and, and the other outside organizations are. Are up to forty's correction eighty-nine, which is wonderfully impressive.
Yeah, yeah, so they're, they're fighting their legs, so that's good. Yeah, good.
And Patrick does a fabulous job.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Motion on the floor, Commissioner Welsmac.
Hi.
Commissioner England.
Hi.
And Commissioner Clark. Motion carries.
Yeah, I'm giving update, a department update.
Yes.
Relative to this, and news just in, I apologize for not having a moment. Thank you, Laura.
Yeah.
Uh, over the last week or so, through a series of emails, including Nick Persch. Are you familiar with Nick from downstairs on domestic violence? Um, and also initiated with the assistance of David Jenkins. Um, I've, I've taken on writing again, reunited with Trish's on through the Center of Public Health. And Department of Justice, this would be direct to the federal Department of Justice grant. For domestic violence services, specifics within that, we're not sure yet, very broad strokes. This, this, I'm sorry, very broad funding. This will cover a pretty wide. A, a sort of things related to domestic violence, but Cheshire Medical is involved specifically because they need funding for. They call it the same grant, which is sexual assault, not sure what the N or the E stands for, but it's a. The same nurse, the same nursing grant.
Oh, nurse evaluator?
Sexual assault or nurse something.
Probably nurse evaluator or something.
Yes, they've had off and on pickle funding over the years. And at the moment, do not have what they need. This grant will fill that gap pretty assuredly. Uh, they ran it through their rings at Cheshire Medical. I'm not sure of the details, but the outcome was they cannot do it. And by.
They can't.
Special request, they would very much like us to step in.
They can't rest the money.
They, they can't, they cannot accept any responsibility of this. They don't have the capacity at the moment to write it. And they don't anticipate capacity later to manage that.
Yeah, that's a good.
They would unfortunately not be able to go for this opportunity. If we're not able to step in and help them. It's due April eighteenth, which means our real deadline is the fifteenth, which is tax day, so it's celebratory in many ways.
Thank you.
Yeah, we always be.
For those of you. For those of you that pay taxes.
Morning.
It's already a very familiar deadline, so everybody will be happy to work with it. Uh, they had incredible enthusiasm. There was something like ten people who wanted to work on this, and I was like, no, 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 do. And we got Trish's on, who I'm pretty excited to work with again. It's been years. And Mick from downstairs, this woman, Lindsay Christian, do you know who Eli? Yes. You don't know her, well, to be quite honest, I have not thoroughly read the opportunity. I have skimmed it. Uh, but Mick tells me that this is worth going for, so we are meeting this afternoon. This is incredibly preliminary. But there seems to be a lot of support behind going forward with it. And they seem to be already sure what they know they need to do, so the project design is likely to come together quickly. I have not made any a hundred percent guarantee we're gonna do this and we're gonna hit the finish line. I have said I will start with them this afternoon. And I see it having a pathway of being complete.
So how, how much money were you talking about?
Uh, I'm, I, I forget the exact amount, but I feel like it was five hundred thousand, it might be seven hundred and fifty thousand, but it's, it's up there significantly.
And, and the intention is to hire or train or provide sexual assault services?
Broadly, the specifics I'll learn this afternoon. Yeah, and that will come together, and I will come back to you because it will definitely need similar votes to what we had today. And I will come back to you.
It's very interesting that we're having this conversation. I happen to. Be up at the Cheshire Medical and, and Dan Gross hunted me down. Because he was the chief financial officer for Cheshire Medical. He's retiring, retiring by the way.
What?
Yes.
Well, he has been there a couple of years.
Yeah, three years.
Really?
Yeah.
Who is?
Dan Gross.
Dan Gross.
Yeah, he hasn't been there that long.
No.
He said to me three years. He said, I've been.
Well, he works remote, so we didn't see him probably for the first.
But he.
Ten, half, half of his.
Yeah, but still.
He brought this, he brought this, he brought this grant up and he's like, we just don't have the capabilities. And he really, I'm like. Oh, I'm, I, I did a fake dance. Um, and said, yeah, no, you know, I'll, I'll go back to our, our grant department and I was gonna touch base with you today. How was the ski, how was the skiing yesterday?
Fantastic. Sorry for being out impromptu, but, uh, yeah, that was totally weird, but.
Yeah, but, um.
Well, I, I think it'll be interesting to see what the data says about the prevalence. And, and.
Oh, snow?
Scope out.
No, he meant domestic, sorry. Change his object together.
Because I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any sense of that.
Yeah.
And obviously, we're gonna have to demonstrate that.
Yes.
Such a need to, to, to spend a half million dollars.
I'm not sure either, but I will take it on good word, and I will be learning through this too. Um, Mick downstairs is kind of still brand new. He's in his rookie year. And I see, I, I don't know what the sustainability would be, but one of the things I'm gonna explore off the bat is that we bridge this now, but that it goes to them later when the capacity. Is there? You don't think so?
They're never gonna have.
No.
I, I don't, that's my personal.
Okay, uh, if you want to adopt this one too, I'm happy to bring it to you.
And. Yeah, I, I think. I think we should go in with the idea that we'll see it to the end.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd be my.
Okay. Yeah, I'm happy to do that. But there is no match, so that's good news.
Yeah, though I, I have heard great things about early on with, with what he's doing downstairs, so that's good.
Yes, I've already written a grant with him, so this will be my second experience. It was very smooth going. He has a lot of grant experience, already knows the linger.
I, 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 I think he does have a pretty impressive international block experience with a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
The extent to which that translates to rural or actual would be interesting, but.
Um, yeah.
Fascinating.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, he's seen domestic violence cases in Africa, which just takes a whole other level.
Yeah, what's I mean, that, that, it's a real dichotomy.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but what a, what a, what a profound experience.
I will report back in a few weeks when I know more. So there you go.
So you, you need something from us?
Nope, just letting you know, and if you wanted to put a stop to it, this would be the time, but I'm not hearing that, so I'm gonna press on.
No, I, I, I think these things are always worth looking at.
Yeah.
What does Terry think? Just wanna make sure. It does not include uniforms. No, no, please feel free to always express, but bring them forward early on.
Any, anywhere. No, you're gonna fuck.
It might even be nurses. I'll have to let you know. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. I don't know, I mentioned my time force today.
Oh, yeah.
So, all right, I'm gonna move on to the next item on our agenda. I also see Richard here. Thank you, Richard. We'll be with you in a few minutes, if that's all right with you. The next, next agenda item is number one, one six one, semi annual report, Sharon, Eli Rivera is here. And received information on this possible report, the last six months of operation under share for bear.
Well prepared. Um, no, we're, we're in good shape when it comes to staffing. Our, we have, we just brought on Cody Mello as a full-time deputy. In a training phase, so he's gonna be going to the academy hopefully in June, July, I think it is. Um, to get his full-time certification. He was a. Corps security officer that kind of transferred over to, to become a deputy, so we'll. We have already candidate in place to replace him as a court security officer. Uh, the dispatch, we're down one full-time since one of our dispatchers. Transferred over to become the administrative assistant, so we need to fill that vacancy. Um, that vacancy was, um, administrative assistant was vacancy was created when a. One of Stephanie from our front office, um. Um, left, um, last week to go work for the superior court. Uh, the K nine unit has, has proven to be a valuable tool for the. Uh, for law enforcement, police safety around here. It's, um. It's working in combination a lot with the P unit and the Peterborough unit. Um, the calls for service. Um, and it's, it's, you know, the dog, we were ready, um. Lucky to have such a good dog who is, he's been doing a, a great job and it's. I will see it's not considered, but it's seen as one of the top dogs in, in the state right now.
What, what's the dog been doing? Excuse me, what has?
Um, it's a detective dog. He has assisted with, um. With, um, tracking on people that is, you know, kind of the. Um, they're kind of, it was just one in mobile. Yeah, they take off running. He's on some good track and he assisted with, um. Doing some, um, sweeps of, at, at, at the jail and in, in other places and what's potential, um, you know. Um, my product being brought into the facilities. Um, but it is, it's proven to be pretty good and a lot of the. Um, agencies that he works for, um, they, they have given me, um, great feedback as to qualities. Of the dog and how his training is, is going. Um, like I mentioned earlier, the, the communications infrastructure is moving along very well. Um, that we've been having meeting now pretty frequently. To go over changes and updates and things like that as we begin to build each specific site. Now, I've probably heard that we recently had to actually shut down all the power to this side of the building. Uh, that means no power from. From the pole or no power from the generator. Um, generators, so we all depend just on our UPS system. Um, that was just isolated to the dispatch center. And that worked fantastic. We were able to keep everything running for an hour and a half just off the UPSes.
Why, why did we not have the power?
Um, for elevator.
Uh, but they had to hook.
Oh, oh, they had to work in the, in the, in the panel. They didn't want any power going to it.
Of course.
Which was a good thing for us that we realized we never had the experience of teeth passing it like that, and we were like. Very concerned about it, but the UPSes did, did, did what they were.
Well, and I, I think the other thing it did for us is that made it realize that the generator is getting ready to be put in place in the next month or so. That we were all gonna, we're all coming together. We're all gonna plan every stage of it because this is even gonna be more complicated than the other. Um, than, than the elevator was because we're having the whole electrical room downstairs redone too at the same time, so that's gonna, we're gonna set up a, a, a. A temporary electrical board. Why they're work on that and it just, we're gonna just all come together, Rob, Hummel, Eli, the Gemini Electric and like that.
So we need to create like an electrical bubble that for everything that cannot be turned off. You know, that we, instead of going on and off, on and off throughout the project, we can just. Transfer everything over and not have to worry about it because those folks are not gonna work on a hot panel. I wouldn't want a hot panel like this. So, um.
What is UPS?
Uninterrupted though.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, well, it brings up a good point because, I mean, we used to have like scads of these UPS, fairly large units in a room. And, you know, you don't see that, we don't think about them, but we went through some period of time, quite a while ago. Where we had to replace some, whether they get old or, you know, they feel the heat or whatever, can't quite remember. But it, it actually drew our attention to the fact that there's quite a bank of. Uh, these uninterruptible power supply batteries that are in your room somewhere.
Yeah, we, we have downstairs in the basement, one of the rooms.
And we have, and you have, you have four UPS.
Well, we have four.
Two, two are not working at this point, right?
And those are gonna replace in April.
Yeah, so then, then we'll have those up, up to speed, but it's also the battery. I mean, it's all the whole thing and.
Yeah, because they, they're. There's a lot of electrons kind of bouncing around inside them all the time, and, and they do. They do get fatigued.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, we have seen an actual increase in the transport to and from the court. Um, it's probably has. The changes of, and they'll reform and things and like that, but, um, we're, we're seeing a lot of in, increase of going back towards the. Transfers to and from the board and actually bringing extradition. Keeps, keeps our guys going like this. Week is a pretty crazy week for us. Um, the other thing is that I think at some point, um, we're gonna have to. Have maybe an anecdote media and talk about the potential growth of the sheriff's office. Um, I, I, there, like I mentioned before, and went to an in-house meeting that. There are some eight organizations out there that have been reaching for us to, um. To provide services and then we need to, at some point decide how we wanna do that, whether they might, whether we might have to invest. Ahead of time to prepare for that or not, um, and just. For that potential growth. So.
You mean law person turn this like.
Correct.
Right to the towns.
Correct.
We're done in facility-wise is what you're talking about?
I think all the way around.
Yeah.
I think, um, because there is, if, but we're. If we keep growing, I'm, I'm running out of space, you know, so.
You know what I think? These are new business.
Who said that?
Is a building next door is for sale. I've always wanted to buy that building.
Oh, an MGM.
Yeah. It's got a night imagine. We wouldn't have to be across the street. You'd have plenty of room, you'd have plenty of room. Um, you could house nonprofits in there.
Oh, they're willing to sell one piece of the property.
What do you mean?
There's five pieces to that property, I think. There's the dirt parking lot, there's the parking lot that.
Oh, I don't think they want to sell the dirt parking. That's a potential goldmine.
I think they're looking at it. I think the city of Keen is, is.
The city of Keen.
To it after that parking lot. Yeah. Uh, now, King State College, they were gonna give it to King State College, they're gonna build their build house down, that never happened. But, um, and then there's the two of the buildings, one of which we're in currently eighty-six.
Right.
And then there's the big building next to it.
I think we buy both of, flip the building across the street, move into MGM. And that would be an awesome. Building. With, and because you got, you already got an internal garage there. Slash salary portion sort of thing.
Well, I just, then I am going and.
Thank you, Eli.
And, uh, just one on the record that it's the sheriff's responsibility. And he'll take all the blame for this gross public expenditure.
Of course, this is all recorded now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I heard, I heard it come from over there. It was Bob.
No, at least I was kind of aim at the person speaking.
Yeah.
But I, 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 it, it has been discussed. For years that if that came up. Well, given the growth we've gone through and the buildings we occupy. You know, consolidating some of that. And returning some of those other areas to a taxable base. Might not be a bad thing. I mean. He's cramped. Thirty-three West Street.
What would we do with this building?
Well, we, we have to keep it. It's a, it's a building, but it's still, it's still could be.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I, I'm not, you know. It would be worth looking at. This is not an opportunity that's gonna come up very often. And we're not making any more space downtown. We went through this with thirty-four West Street, across the street.
Yeah. How many million next door? All right.
How many bills again?
Uh, six point something, but, but again.
But they also want, they also want, they also want heaps of porcelain of the building, run of porcelain of the building. Which could offset your cost because not paying that in.
How many points they have to?
Seventy?
So, we could certainly make that look like a new market tax credit project. It's, we just, just like the courthouse.
Well, the new market tax credit district.
Was that?
It's in the district.
Yeah, no, that's why I think.
We'd have to have somebody else buy it. We couldn't buy it.
We could do it for medic.
We could do it.
And, and actually medic might actually appreciate this as they, uh, get their lakes back underneath them and.
I'd take this for the first floor.
Well, no, that might be.
You need to get here.
I, I just think it's worth looking at. Yeah, we, we have literally had discussions about downtown space for decades. Wondering how we, how we accommodate growing campus.
Yeah.
And it's not gonna change.
Yeah. Do you have anything else, Eli?
Oh, thanks for bringing it up, Eli. I appreciate the.
No, I, I, I think I'm gonna leave it there.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
Well, tell, tell me, you mentioned extradition, so they distance extradition?
Well, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna master money. We decided to be going to New York a lot. You know, quite a bit.
That's where all.
This tradition, so, um, and the guys know it's a. Couple hours.
Yeah.
And full day trips.
And, and were you suggesting that the transports to and from the court? Are in place of video arraignment or hearings where the otherwise might get released from jail versus the court?
Well, there, there, the, the video, it just goes back and forth. You know, um, we are, um, there. I, we're seeing a lot of people just being brought to the court that could have been done by video. Um, so it doesn't, doesn't happen. I know some other judges just want to have the person there, and that's, we're okay with that because we just pack up the van. Um, and bring them all down, we're gonna be already there. Um, but I guess I'm thinking about the number of people going back and forth. We, we, we've seen it increase quite a bit. Um, you know, like I said, this, this, somehow this month has been almost. You know.
But it always struck me as rather odd that the chief justice of the court system. Really almost mandated an increase in video arraignment. And yet. They can't control their own judges. Don't wanna do that.
Plus, you know, they all stood it. Plus, they also switched their, they switched back to PC hearings. So we're making extra trips now to.
Right.
Um, versus before they went just to Superior Court, so now we, we'll see some PC hearings, or we have to, you know, bring them to here. And we don't, we're not skiing a lot yet, but there is a handful, and now we're doing that transport. If there is anything at the jail, you know, for, well, probably cause the earnings that, you know, that were not happening before the district or level. Because there was.
There's also the potential that the court could run out for, because remember, we, we struggled to squeeze. That function onto that piece of property, because it was the only property we had, the only property available.
Do we do kind of millions on the top?
Yeah.
Well, that, that would fit a handful, thanks.
So we'd have, I mean, some of it, we'd end up having to have issues with the taxation on the bonds because you have to have so much. I mean, if there, if we start mixing.
Yeah, I think.
The penthouse for the.
Possession.
Okay.
Yeah, the penthouse for the county administrator.
Much nicer.
He's just bringing up. Pretty concept.
Oh, oh, okay. Who started this conversation, but?
Sheriff did.
Yeah, no, but like, but if, 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 if any, if those conversations about growth. That I'm, I'm speaking of do come to fruition, we're looking at high potentially adding to, to one, two to three new deputies.
Awesome, no, I don't, I don't disagree.
Yeah.
And I'm serious about looking at the concept of that building, the square footage. Taking a brief look by on the numbers.
Yeah.
And, um, and seeing what that might happen, and the fact this may be an excellent opportunity for. The medic guy, whose name I.
Cody Morrison?
Cody, to take a look at it and see what magic he can bring. Okay, I can just still look at it, I mean. I, I don't wanna be ten years down the road saying, geez, we had that, and, cuz we got no place to go.
Mm-hmm.
No place to go.
Yeah.
And if you look at restorative justice, if you look at all the court stuff, look at dispatch, if you look at. Emergency services.
We all, always just keep squeezing in us.
Yeah.
We're, we're gonna run out of on Lake Street.
We keep on taking on these frauds like that off of the tax rolls.
We will grow.
No, I'm talking about my house that I live in. No, no, it might have to, because I won't be able to pay the tax.
Not, not at all.
You know what, you know what, you know what the impact on the average house is, non-taxable property, so you can.
Twelve cents.
No, this.
How much?
No, it's about a dollar eighty-five.
Oh, no.
Yeah. On the tax.
Okay.
Well, they have an ambulance base there too.
But you should probably put one of the facilities in Walpole.
I, I.
It'll take about, take about seven million dollars off of your base.
I'd be okay with that.
Yeah, you would.
Yeah.
But, uh, cuz I don't pay taxes anyway.
I have too much money to pay taxes.
You guys are sure these meetings are recorded?
All right, so, anything else, Eli, is that it?
No, um.
No.
No, I'm not in here.
All right, I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna move on.
You have just about enough problem.
I'm gonna move on, last week during my report, I touched a little bit about, um, having been reached out by Richard Menard, who's here today. Um, he's from Building Community in New Hampshire, and, uh, you said, yeah, look into it a little bit more. Um, and so I had Richard join us this morning just to talk about what he's been thinking about and. Um, and he's put, give a little bit of a overview of the programming. And where things stand, and if there's a partnership there, and even to the point where possibly a congressional. Request for forty, fifty thousand dollars to do a study, but I'll let you, Richard, uh, take it there, and you are muted.
Thanks for the reminder, Chris, good morning, I'm Rick Menard, I'm the executive director of Building Community in New Hampshire, we're nonprofit based in Manchester. Uh, with another office in Nashua. Uh, BCNH is, is part of the refugee resettlement network of service providers. Um, and I started talking with Chris years ago, uh, about the potential for. Formal refugee resettlement in Keene and Cheshire County. Uh, I grew up in Elsted, so I'm familiar with Cheshire County and, and worked at Sentinel in the late seventies. Um, and my brother still lives there, so I feel close to the county and, uh. And Chris explained that it's, the, the demographics of Cheshire County are difficult, aging, fewer and fewer young people. Fewer, fewer potential employees for the companies that, that, um, need to maintain a workforce. My organization is, works with refugees, these are people who have come with the government blessing. Uh, from other countries in the world, at the moment, the largest number of refugees are coming from Ukraine. Uh, Democratic Republic of Congo, uh, Rwanda, uh, Burundi. Uh, and most recently Haitian parolees are coming to New Hampshire. Uh, these are people, again, these are all legal documented, uh, refugees. They come with their work permits, and so the first thing they need to do when they get here is find a job. And much of our work, my organization's work, is to help employers recruit and retain that workforce. Um, you probably all have driven by Pitco Frey later, as you approached Concord. Um, we, over the last two years, we've helped place about fifty, five zero. Um, Congolese and Afghan refugees there as part of their workforce, that they desperately needed this, they tried to expand. Uh, and, and so it makes some sense, I think, for Keene and Cheshire County to. To really try to develop a strategy for, for incorporating refugees into the communities. It's not simple, um, it can't, wouldn't, shouldn't happen overnight, um, but other changes are making it almost inevitable. Uh, uniting for Ukraine, uh, it has per- brought perhaps a thousand Ukrainians to New Hampshire. In the last year and a half, and, and there are sponsors. For five of them in Keene, five of them in Marlboro, five in Nelson, two in Ridge, I think Roxbury has a few sponsors. Uh, and that number could go up, whether those people are here or not, I don't know. But the, the potential is that there are people who want to bring them here, and that's a part of the legal process. Uh, and once they're there, um, if we find out that they're there and they need our help. Uh, I have two Ukrainian case managers who work with them, make sure that they get their kids enrolled in school. Help them find work, help them find housing, uh, sign up for SNAP benefits if they qualify. And help them really get adjusted to life in the United States. Uh, the, the federal government is also changing, uh. The way other refugees come to New Hampshire with a, with a program called Welcome Core. Which, like uniting for Ukraine invites people to sponsor individuals or families. And so some, some refugee resettlement may be happening, um, almost on, on its own in the county. Uh, uh, but the infrastructure to serve those, those new Americans is not necessarily there today. Traditionally, refugee resettlement has happened in Concord, Manchester, and Nashua, period. Uh, there are two major resettlement organizations, Centria Carolines, the International Institute of New England. And they have primary responsibility for meeting people at the airport, getting them to, getting them into a house. Uh, but as I say, the, the structure is changing and, um, in. Cheshire County perhaps inevitably will see more refugees, but it could do so by design. And the question that I raised to Chris was whether it made sense to start a study. Get some information, how many employers would like to recruit refugees to fill their unmet. Re- uh, employee needs. How many, and, and where are those companies, how many jobs do they think they're need to fill? Uh, how many school systems are prepared to work with kids who are English learners? Uh, how many apartments might be available anywhere near, uh, those employers? Housing is the biggest problem, and we all say so in this process, and, and, you know, fundamentally, how many. Uh, refugees could Cheshire County absorb and to have a net positive economic impact on the county? You know, we know that, that for a while refugees require some public support. But very, uh, almost immediately, they all start working too, and, and paying taxes and contributing to the general welfare of the community. So, that was the, the question I posed to Chris, should we do a study to answer those questions? Um, and it's not something that my organization could legitimately propose on behalf of the county. This would have to come from you, uh, if you don't wanna do this, we'll keep talking about other ways we might. Begin to answer those questions, but a congressionally designated, um, grant, contract to do that work. Would seem to be, uh, in keeping with Senator Sheehan's guidelines for what she's looking for. Might be possible, might be a good way to jumpstart the process. So, that was the, the question I posed to, to Chris, I don't know if the county commissioners are all interested in pursuing this. I could probably get a proposal, uh, together by the deadline, which is coming right up. Um, and, um, find a few people to write letters of support, but ultimately, this is, would, you know, it'd have to come from the county. And I don't know if, if you wanna do that today.
Richard, can you summarize again, cuz some, some of the audio was a little disrupted, what, what the proposal? Would be for?
Sure, sorry about the audio quality. Uh, I would, I would ask for fifty thousand dollars to, for the county to hire a group. To conduct a study of the potential for refugee resettlement in Cheshire County. Answering four specific questions, how many employers would like to hire how many job, uh, employees? How many, uh, apartments are available to house new Americans? Uh, how, what school systems are prepared? To provide English, language classes to speakers of other languages?
Mm-hmm.
And, um, how many refugees would, could Cheshire County absorb in the next? Three years, let's say, and, and have a positive, a net positive economic impact?
So, I like that idea, actually, it coincidentally, I, I happen to bring, uh. Something that I was gonna talk about today, and I'll, I'll pass this around, but basically. It's a, uh, uh, an analysis over the last twenty years of the birth and death rate. And the foreign-born folks that are a percentage of the total civilian labor force. And you see from this graph that I'll, I'll pass around, that New Hampshire's birth rate is. Is less than its death rate, and that the number of foreign-born workers in the marketplace has gone from like fifteen percent. To twenty percent, and the only way that we immediately address the growing economy is with foreign workers. This, this comes back to your, your commentary of our time ago about, about getting more immigrants in here, you can see statistically. In this yellow line here, uh, the, the birth rate is in the negative with respect to the death rate. And the green here is the number of foreign workers, uh, and so you can see the percentage that foreign workers. Uh, constitute the workforce, and then in this other one, you see a, a rating of New Hampshire's. Uh, natural change, they call it birth rate and death rate, superpose on each other. Um, which really kinda underscores that we're not gonna meet our labor needs for another generation. Without a more robust response to immigration and foreign workers. Um, and, um, and I think, you know, you think, you've felt that, I think, for a long time. Uh, but this, this is interesting that we can, that we actually have quite the data. That demonstrates that any growth in, in, uh. GDP in the United States has fundamentally been built on the back of foreign workers, so. I, I would certainly, um, I, I don't know how we fund it, but, but I'd certainly be in favor of. A stronger role, because we're not gonna find people to work, cuz we're not producing enough people. And the death rate is eclipsing the birth rate.
Right, and the differential is just getting, getting stupid.
Yeah.
Because it, not only that, it's massive, it's, it's exacerbates.
Yeah.
As the older you get, uh, the more expensive your housing needs.
Yeah, exactly.
But the less, and the less that you're actually able to contribute, you know, to this society.
Right, and I, so I don't know what the magic formula is, but this comes back to something I think we've talked about before, certainly I've been advocating. We need to get employers more invested in a partnership to create housing, to create. Uh, English, to create some of these transitional services to help. Help foreigners integrate, kind of build into the community, um. I, I don't see any way out of our labor crisis that we've been dealing with for. Almost a decade at this point.
Richard, are there?
Yep.
People, are there people who specialize in these kind of, uh, studies? Or is this, uh, just a general, give up this topic and they'll?
Yeah, who would, who would, who would lead this study, do you know of anybody that could, could, could you guys, would you guys be in, uh, someone that would be looking at it, I mean, who?
Uh, I, Chris, I haven't, uh, begun to think about what outfit to hire, you know, I, I could help. With framing questions, but I don't see any of the, that funding really coming to us, much as I would love to, uh. That's, I think, that's, wouldn't be our role in this, but we could hire, uh, I'm sure a firm. As you know, this process is slow, so slow, that if we even get a positive indication that we might. That the funding might come through, it's gonna be at least eight months from now that it would actually happen. So, you know, we could get something going on another channel other than the, the congressional earmark.
Rick, 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 did you say that there were, there were federal funds, uh, kind of earmarked for, for a purpose like this?
In the past?
Yes, uh, Senator Shaheen sent forty thousand dollars to Southern Hampshire University. To study the challenges of English language learners in Manchester.
So I don't know why, I don't know why we couldn't have somebody like, uh, Jim Tal at King's Day College.
Well, you're a psychologist, but, but, but I think direction is right, we approach the university system.
Mm-hmm.
With, uh, potentially, I'll say hiring a graduate or developing an internship program for international studies. Which I think is still somewhat popular.
Yeah.
Or global, or, or whatever the.
It still exists at least.
Yeah, whatever they call it today, with, with, global, this and that. Um. I, I mean. I, I don't see why we couldn't kind of grow into that at the expense of taking.
Education department, and it's dying.
It's a what?
It's the global education, and it's dying.
Because there's no role for it. I mean, so we don't know where.
You know, there's a role, they're just not interested in funding, because it was, it was a time where self-funding. And it's not anymore, so they're still kicking it to the curb.
Well, Bob, I'm sorry.
Do things come to my mind, perhaps we should have Suzanne Mansley here, who is, who's our, our grandspouse who. Listening to this conversation, secondly, and closely related to this is Lewiston, Maine, which is near and near to our hearts. Because two of our kids and their husbands and two of our grandkids are at Bates College. And sadly, Bates, uh, St. Lewiston was, uh, in the news many months ago with that mass shooting up there. But, uh, as of twenty or thirty or forty years ago, Lewiston, Maine was, was in rough shape as a community. Except for the Bates College campus, because most of the factories were moving out. There were many, many empty buildings downtown, but the Somali people started, uh, started moving into, into the community. Um, our daughter Anna Louise has been a, uh. Is a certified masters level teacher of, of, um. English language learners or, or, um, teaching English for the second language. And for the last seven years, she's been teaching classes of, of K through six. Um, students from foreign countries, about eighty percent from, from Somalia. And, and, and these little kids come into class, uh, having gotten off the plane. Uh, and, um, and they often speak no English, zero English for their first couple of weeks. But, um, but she just loves the teaching because the kids are just incredibly responsive, and they really do very, very well. Secondly, over the last three or four decades, with so many Somali people there, they have significantly. they have significantly refurbished downtown Lewiston, which when our kids were there thirty years ago, uh, they were, uh, it was, it was a dark, dark community to be going into. But when we've been there to see our grandkids in the last five or six years, it is, it it's it's become a bustling community, which is doing very, very well. Many businesses have have reopened. Um, there, there are new gardens and recreational areas downtown. Many of the downtown buildings have been beautifully refurbished. Some of this is secondary to the uh soccer skills and abilities of the Somali kids uh who eight or ten years ago, they uh made the uh Lewiston High School the champions in in of of all high schools in the state of Maine. And Lewiston is really back on the map um for small to medium-sized cities within the state of Maine. So Lewiston did it, and um Keene and Cheshire County are in much better shape to begin with. But um but but there is real potential for growth, and and this is a fascinating topic to be hearing about today. Thank you. Thank you very much for presenting.
They'll they'll be on the third floor of the NGM, this is the International Settlement.
It would be interesting to find out what level of uh of foreign uh language programs that there are available in the school systems here.
Man- Manchester is probably pretty unique. I think they have something like sixty-seven languages in the Manchester School District. And it's amazing the breadth of diversity, but of course, it's it's a big city.
I mean, a key city is down to just Spanish. They don't, they don't do French or German.
Minors.
Yeah.
Um, if I can jump in really quick, Richard, we met a while back when I worked for Annie Custer. It's been a while, but good to see you. And um I just wanted to say that the congressionally-directed spending um that will be due actually next week now, uh Annie Custer's office specifically, their application is doubling as a request for funding opportunities as well. So it couldn't be hurt, it couldn't hurt to submit that, just to have um her congressional staff do some research and see if there's other grant opportunities besides just the congressional funding. And that's only about two hundred and fifty words that needs to go into that, so it's pretty, pretty easy. Yeah, and I can make Suzanne aware of of this, but I will tell you that she doesn't have the bandwidth right now to take on.
Rick's folks can help with the verbiage and teeing it up. I mean, obviously.
And that's what I, 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 when I sent the email last night to him, I said he he would have to really take this on. If if the commissioners wanted to move this forward, because we've got the the Southwest Mutual Lake grant that we're working on, and that's taking up all, because it's two point eight million dollars that we're asking for.
Right.
So um that's where we're at right now.
Well, I I I I certainly think it's something to pursue within whatever capacity we can. I don't see a downside to that.
Or we can do it with a pass-through.
Yeah, right, we would just need the, we'd probably need the actual group that will be doing the assessment before the grant is submitted. It depends on this specific funding, but we probably just need the name of who we'd like to be using.
Doesn't UNH have uh, what's the UNH public policy?
KC Cars?
Carson School?
Yeah, that's a good choice.
Uh, that that would be an excellent master's or PhD thesis or something. I would think that we could, you know, is is it Lucy Hodder associated with that now?
Yeah, actually.
Um, Lu- Lucy was general counsel to Maggie Haslam there. Uh, but I I think that if we could get the university system involved.
Right.
That would be a great uh obiture to qualify broad-based uh uh partner just to 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 answer the question that Rick raises in terms of the 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 what the proposal would would yield.
And Lucy Hodder is still there, and then also um the New Hampshire Fiscal Policy Institute is a good organization that does research, so even if they can't perform this, I'm sure they would know of many organizations that do this type of work.
Yeah, because the economic benefit.
Yeah.
And then policy directed at UNH.
Yeah.
Um, would play well in terms of federal funding.
Yeah.
That that nexus would be pretty important, I would think.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So I guess what it means is that what I'm hearing from the commissioners is that you're comfortable with uh uh Rick moving forward with with putting some language together, maybe coming back to us next week on on Wednesday, zooming back into us. It will be the same zoom, but we can send it to you anyways. And we can, by then you can, you'll have an idea about how you want to move forward with the grant and all that, and um Suzanne can be on the, on the Zoom too, and um and we'll go from there.
You, you know Lucy?
Yeah, I haven't met her once, twice, and she is still there, yeah.
That that would be, I think that would be a great conversation to 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 uh, once we, once we get some bones from from Rick and shoot it out to Lucy and then and these other folks, I I I mean, Lucy's are I think she she could have somewhere off the top of her head that might be helpful. Yeah.
I'm very enthusiastic about this.
What do you say, Rick?
I I just wanted to thank you for hearing me out and making me very happy to hear your conversation. You know, these attitudes are not universal, and I think you're wise, and you're on the right track, so it's encouraging.
We are not a, we're not a, we're not a nimby, we're a yimby community.
But there's a lot of foresight there, and and let me, I'll do some quick drafting and get started on what could become our submission in the next week or so.
If if we're not, you know, if at the end of the day, we're not comfortable with doing a congressional spending right now, then we can look at it to see if there's other grants that are out there, we can, there's other ways we can partner with. So this is the beginning of a conversation.
I I will bet that we can identify three to five funding sources that
Correct.
combining together, because these there are agencies that help resettle these people, at least get them out of their struggling countries. I have no idea what they are, but obviously there's not, you know, twenty thousand individual citizens just scraping together money that somehow they get some help.
I'm I'm sure we could do that. I'm sure that there, the charitable foundation, among others, would be willing to support.
You know, getting models here in Cheshire County. Uh, so this might actually be a very uh, there's no reason why we we can't fix the immigration problem in the United States.
Sure.
Yeah. But I also, but I also think we started down this road, because, you know, this this whole issue of 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 having enough of a population to meet the needs of our community, you know, the half the reason we we've done that stuff with the um chambers, because they're they're doing one portion of, this is a whole nother section that we can take a look at. You know, and because it's, it's, I always, I say this a lot, it's, you know, it's not about, when you run a campaign, it's not about just putting yard signs up. It's about walking the ward, it's about, it's about writing letters to the editor, whatever it may be, but it's 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 so this is another avenue that we can take a look at to see if we can come up with a plan to meet a need that is going to go it's in crisis, it's gonna be over the cliff and down hitting the water by the time everybody sees it.
And well, and at the end of the day, somebody would have to describe what the alternative is. If I can, I don't think there is one. I mean, when you look at that data.
Yes.
It it's pretty clear uh that the only way uh to uh ensure uh filling vacancies and growing economies with foreign workers.
So you might as well come start. It looks like the numbers have been pretty constant with the number of, well, immigrants anyway. Yes, so we haven't really grown that number, and that's maybe the reason is because we don't have answers to these questions. We don't have homes ready, we don't have schools ready, if you don't have.
Well, there's that, but remember, you've got, you've got uh, you've got art limits on legal immigration at the federal level, notwithstanding all of the foolish bickering over immigration. Um, and and so you're right, the the percentage of foreign workers coming into the country legally has remained pretty much the same because of COVID.
Uh, but it's like anything else, I mean, they're taking a whole, the whole allowable immigration pool in the country.
Right.
Each location, it doesn't matter if they all go in one place or, you know, activity it up, our portion of it can also, can always grow.
Sure, if if we create a structure to capture legal immigrants and and create a a useful structure to integrate them, then we're gonna attract more of these, because the cap at the federal level for people coming in is about to change. I think, so what we'll do is we end up competing, because our birth rate is is less than our death rate, and that's, that's causing a pinch.
Yeah, well, then more, the more younger people we give ash, that that rate is gonna go up.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I'm assuming that the immigrants are gonna have children. They're gonna stick around.
Well, the hospital in these last few years, it certainly certainly was taken on a half dozen of physicians, you know, physicians and nurses and other professionals who are from other countries, and they are fitting in very well.
And and one of the Afghan evacuees who came when Kabul fell uh is is at Tricia Medical, I think polishing floors in the custodial department. And his family doing well, apparently in keen tune, and they were very warmly received by a community support group.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the map, you you see the brown here, and all of New England and all of the Northeast is in the negative natural change position.
Brown is appropriate color for dying off.
Yeah, well, pretty much, but you gotta go to Texas. You gotta go to Alaska or California, Texas, and Georgia to have a birth rate that's exceeding the death rate in any significant way. And so we're simply not gonna find the bodies, we're simply not, they don't exist. So we, if we don't construct a plan that's responsive to the reality, then we're never gonna be able to meet the needs and you know, we need nurses, we need police, we need congressional officers, we need everybody. We need accountants, we need doctors, we need nurses, we need restaurant workers.
And what I, what I've learned is.
Airplanes are failing. I need maintenance workers on airplanes.
Yeah, yeah, well, look, look, we 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 weren't able to get responsive from audit, just because there's not enough auditors.
Yeah.
And so, and it never happened.
But but it's 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 a, it's a, it's a place setting for somebody that can take many steps. You know, I, we have our our niece living with us right now, and she's uh in Brandon State College, you know, she's about to get her associate's degree. And I will tell you, the system, everybody says about college debt, there are ways to go to college and come out without debt, because this young lady is working as a para in the school district. So as long as she gets a certain grade, she gets monies there to go towards her education. They keep giving her grants because of her grades, you know, she's, she's a good student, she's, you know, ninety and above. And they give her, they give her, and and she is probably gonna have very, if any, any when everything's said and done, any debt coming out of college. But it's, she's doing it her way, and it makes sense, there's opportunities for everybody to be able to come in and take that next step, and if we can start building that, then yeah, we are building a workforce that could, you know, build on their lives.
And if you think about it, you bring a fourteen-year-old kid in, and you invest ten years in in their settlement and integration, you then have a workforce within a decade. We've been looking at the Silver tsunami.
Yeah.
We knew it was coming, we knew that forty years ago.
Yeah.
Um, and we've done virtually nothing to respond to it. And so if we have to wait, and and we've been talking at this table the last ten years about staffing issues, and we're gonna buy people.
Yeah.
So if we have to wait another ten years, but actually take an affirmative, programmatic step, then that's not a long time.
Yeah.
That's gonna pass by like nothing.
Yeah, um, and and you said something a little while ago about, you know, soccer and and, well, you know what? Manchester, some of their soccer programs have taken an incredible turn. With some of the young refugees they brought in, and those kids, King's Day College, when Rick Scott was uh the head coach over at King's Day College, he started doing a dialogue with a lot of these kids, and they started going there, and they started getting a college education and playing soccer for King State at the same time. I mean, there are paths for incredible stories to be told for us to build, and these, some of these kids who have graduated have stuck around. So that's just something to think about.
The immigration success story is no different now than it was in eighteen hundreds.
No.
And once we make room for it.
Once we can pass the rhetoric.
Yeah. Well, so, does that help, Rick?
Wonderful. Yeah, I'll get started and and keep working with uh through Chris. Again, I really appreciate your time, your interest, and your your belief in this.
We look forward to hearing from you again next week, and there's a lot of excitement in the room here. And I also point out that that of the six people in the room, four of us have receding hairlines and 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 increasing grayness of our scalp.
Yeah, me too, I know.
Davis is just a boy.
Yeah, also, you you received an email from Davis this morning.
Yes.
Include him, include him in on anything that you're sending out.
Got it.
If you need to have him, if you need to set up another Zoom with us, either on Friday, Monday, or Tuesday prior to the meeting next week, that's that's not a problem. Just send it to us, and we'll, we'll make sure that happens, okay?
Thank you, thank you very much. I'll sign off.
All right, thank you.
This is exciting.
And just so we have a footprint of some of those details, just forward something like those on us.
Yeah. Okay.
Rick Menard.
Yeah.
He's not the Rick Menard he used on Key Door, is he?
No, no. Was that it? No, but his parents.
His parents lived in Alstead, they're dead now, but um
Big difference.
Yeah, huge, I can't remember, he was an executive. And I think I think it was like IBM or something like that.
Oh.
Um, and him and Betty moved to Alstead. This little town come from the city, you know, that, I'm not sure what they did.
They were so cute together, because she had eyesight issues, and he was like her, he he made she lived a great life.
Yeah.
And as he started having problems, even with her eyesight issues, she took over some of the care for him. And it was, and they just loved each other, and they were just nicest people, and they gave so much to Democratic causes, they were always at headquarters doing something.
They were always there, fabulous people.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, what that, well, I I'm I'm, if we get a little more, if we get a little more.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We we've enjoyed part of you. Conversation over the years.
Okay. Yeah, um, I'm gonna keep on going in my report, um. The mayor wasn't able to make it this week, so he plans to be at our meeting next week, which is actually great, because it is, yeah, our meeting next week is at EMS.
Oh, okay.
So it'll be great. It's gonna be in person yet.
Well, he's down in person.
Yeah, yeah.
I hope so.
Um, Monday, the Monday at seven o'clock, delegation hall, the acceptance of the budget uh will be occurring.
Where did they end up?
Uh, zero, negative zero point zero nine percent, or twenty, about twenty-five thousand dollars less than the year before, for taxes to be raised.
Sure.
Well, Mayor Mac, Aron Cunningham, and I talked yesterday, um, and I, he said, he said, finally, I can, I can breathe, we passed our budget yesterday, I said, where'd you guys land? Seven point six percent increase. And they were very happy with that.
Wow.
You know, and if I look at Mayor Art County, but if I look at some of the other ones that have returned, you know, uh, you know, Sultana County had eight point eight and then a nine point nine in the last two years. Of course, their budget, their next budget isn't due until June. Um, um, Bell Map was a thirty-five percent increase last year. Um, I think a lot of it had to do with some of the messes that, you know, you, they had gun stock, they had that group of individuals. You know, you they had gun stock, they had that group of individuals, uh, government state reps that were elected that were forced out. I think, I think that's some of it, but I don't know. Um, Stratford County, three point six, Carroll County, thirteen point two. And if you look at our past, uh, our past consistency. Uh, where 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 we landed, zero point zero percent last year, negative zero point zero nine this year.
Seventeen was the nursing home.
Uh, seventeen was the nursing home, yeah.
And that one, that one was.
That was about a twelve point two percent increase or something like that.
What do you what do you suppose NGM pays for property taxes?
Uh, that assessment has got to be for seven million dollars, uh.
Well, that's their, that's what they're selling them for.
I don't know, I don't know, you have to find out.
Yeah, I can look it up.
Tax property assessing.
Yeah, you just you get the assessment and then, um, I don't know if they have it yet.
I'm telling you, we are looking to, it's an interesting opportunity. I know what you're saying about.
Well, it is, you know, but I mean, we're in the same discussion when you guys were talking about moving Maplewood here. You know, I was like, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, oh, come on. You know, because we had just got done talking about the hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. That sort of, it always happens in many seats in central areas because that's where you have all these government, that's where you have your hospitals. And that's where you have your colleges, blah, 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 you know? And, you know, all of these other towns who come and live around us.
Privilege of king.
You have to be the. Yeah, 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 but all of you moochers.
So, yeah.
That's right. I did decide to be the center. I remember.
Okay.
It was actually sixteen percent. I thought for some reason it was twelve point two in my head.
It's up there, yeah. But I was going to buy it.
That was a thirty six million dollar bond.
Yeah.
And then I added some level of increase that year up to the budget.
What is the address of? We're thirty three.
The key sentinel does say, um, the property's assessed value is about seven million.
But what is the address? So we're thirty three, so they must be.
So eighty six across the street. So fifty five West Street.
Fifty five.
They have two hundred employees, but most of them work from home, so that's why they're doing this.
They have it.
Sixty or seventy.
Have it assessed at seven.
That's what it says according to city database.
Sixty or seventy, they said, we're we're in the billion.
Hmm, okay, that makes sense.
So they could need one floor, is what this. Well, and of course, that floor looks to remain taxable, so.
Well, yeah, any anything, anything.
There is a really nice executive office there. Now, it's for the commission. Sure, well, they had a really nice. Yeah, they had some really nice zoom rooms in work areas. Um.
Only been in that building one time.
And they have a cafeteria.
Oh. Yeah, fine.
We could open up a restaurant.
We'll call Luca, we'll do a form.
C Square Restaurant, Cheshire County, you know.
Are you sure it's not Chris, Chris's restaurant?
Yeah, Chris goes.
So I guess these assessments, I mean, I get, you said you got the assessment, but. I thought it showed what they paid for taxes, but I guess we could figure.
It's seven million, it's thirty four.
Well, is it listed in, is it listed?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I mean, look.
Because if it's listed, they would have a running tab of what the taxes that have been paid, right?
Yeah.
What do you mean?
Like click on Zillow or something?
Yes. Why they're doing that, why they're do, why they're doing that. So seven o'clock here, we do have some presentations that will occur that night, um, a slide from the adoption of the budget, adoption of. Uh, some sheriff's bail increases and, um. Whatever else we have to put on that night, but, um, uh. But things are, I think things will look good to, you know, with that end of it and then. Um, the presentations from, uh, Nanoc Collaborative or Luca and his group will come in and do a presentation. Um, uh, the EMS will do a quick little data presentation. And then we're going to do the presentation, uh, around. Uh, each, we'll have each tab done, they can see the, uh. Tax increases over, you know, the paper that we showed you two weeks ago. We'll walk people through that and so people can see from two thousand to twenty twenty three. But really focusing on the last six or seven years where we've come from and what we've been doing. Yeah.
This isn't a city database or anything, but, um.
Between.
It must be two hundred and twenty eight thousand.
Oh, that's exactly what I had, yeah.
Yeah, two twenty eight five.
Maybe there's an opportunity.
How much?
Maybe transition.
We're coming, we're both kind of coming up with the same calculate, two hundred and twenty eight thousand.
For, uh, what they say in the city?
Property.
Yeah, because the tax for the city is thirty one eighty nine and their assessment is the thirty one sixty six. Their tax to the city will be two hundred and twenty eight thousand.
Just big, right?
Exactly, and if we were still renting out, then that means that floor would be taxable, right?
I know.
Yeah, it would.
I I don't know how that works.
It does because MFS owns that building on the corner. So all on the Chinese restaurant, the other area. That's all taxable.
Right, right, right.
Above that is not.
That's what property is.
But there, so there's, there's a difference. I I don't know how that works, I mean, but did you see like what I put in your mailbox where, um. Southwest Community Services needs to be anti their. Taxable, um. Whatever. We are by statute.
Pilot, they're pilot.
Yeah, we by statute do not pay taxes. A nonprofit and stuff like that, they have to apply. For taxes, so I don't know how it works when a government owns a building. And rents out a portion of it for.
I think, I, yeah, I'll be, I'd be surprised if that portion that we're renting out isn't taxable.
Oh, it would have to be for non for government because.
Government property, non taxable.
Yeah.
City, city property, but they they own buildings.
And they they have to pay taxes.
Yeah.
Yeah, themselves, yeah.
I don't know how.
What comes out of the rent, obviously, you know, it's a. If it is, if it is a revenue generating site, then then it's no longer. The use is no longer government.
Right, and that would be also playing into the bond as well.
Yeah.
Is the bond, um. Would have to hit a certain percentage and I don't know what that percentage is. To be a government exempt tax bond.
churches when they own property, which is which is rented out for apartments or something, uh, and. We were involved years ago with church which which owned a, uh, a double resident parsonage. One for the rector, one for, uh, one which was rented. It's necessary for them to be paying taxes for the for the rental portion of it.
Yeah, there was a major case actually in Swansea's, uh, the the church.
Building.
Was it, yeah, that owns that, uh, that that section of Swansea Lake.
Yeah.
And that was a big court case that came down that they actually have to pay taxes because it's not. Yeah, it's not part of their, I don't know how they define it, but, you know, their praying spot.
Yeah, well, your assessor, the department, your assessor. Looks at exempt for nonprofit for government and they and they make that interpretation as the percentage that is taxable based on the. Function and the purpose of the organization. And we pay the taxes.
Until.
Until we start to use it for government purposes and that government purpose started when we broke ground. At the J M, but up until that time it was taxable until the next April.
It wasn't, it wasn't even we paid taxes until we occupied the building.
Right.
Divid, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's sort of like what we're doing up at the, uh, we pay taxes on the farm because we rent that out, right?
No, we pay taxes on the farm because by statute, farms pay taxes.
Yeah, because back then, like, county farms were the big thing. They didn't, it was an overture to the local communities that. They would, they would.
Make.
Make, okay, make a contribution for the local.
All right, I'm gonna keep on moving on, um. Uh, tonight I am speaking to the Southwest Mutual Aid. Um, board of directors updating them about the infrastructure project that we're doing. And May I've been invited to go before their annual meeting and talk about it, which will be interesting. Because there's usually about a hundred people from Vermont, New Hampshire in the room. And I've talked to, I've talked before to this group. And, um, so we'll we'll just outline where we're at, what we're doing, um. What we've submitted at that point at the annual meeting, but this one is then just gonna update them, answer any questions they may have. Um, and, uh, and go from there and make sure they understand that we're not promising anything. We're just, you know, helping out in this in this area and if it comes to fruition, great. With that being said, on Thursday. We're hosting here a meeting with all the players from both sides of both sides of the river. We've been able to work with Southwest, uh, Regional Planning Commission to get their counterpart over on the Vermont side to be in the meeting. We've got some of the of the delegation people from both sides of the river. We've got chiefs from both sides of the river coming. We've got, um, the director of Homeland Security coming from New Hampshire. We are hoping to have the director of Vermont, um, um, be at zone. Uh, so we'll have a, we'll have a litany of people and we're really just trying to get everybody on the same page. In the room of what we're trying to do, um, especially the regional planning commission so that they understand. Part of the brick agreement, no matter what we do, whether it's congressional spending request. Or we go directly to Homeland Security for a brick grant, it's gonna end up as a brick grant. Uh, because the category under congressional spending that we fit under is homeland, so that it goes to a brick ring. So part of the brick grant that we've been told is that we have to have, um. A regional plan, a hazard, a hazard mitigation plan, uh, for for the county. And so part of the discussion is going to be, oh, Alan Gould's something to. Uh, part of the discussion is going to be, uh. Do we just need to update all the towns in the city of Kings hazard mitigation plan? Or do we have to create something that's never been created in Hampshire? And so, um, it's gonna be a lot of questions that are gonna be answered at this and it's 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 getting from Vermont. Really on board of what we're trying to do, um, and so we're getting closer, it's. It's a lot of, a lot of work from everybody, uh, Dopless has done a great job of helping us with this too. With his connections that he has, um, so I think we're closer. But again, I don't promise anybody anything because we don't know how things will play out, but if we get it and we get it from both sides. It's about a two point eight billion dollar request on the New Hampshire side and about a two point four on the, um, Vermont side. That's that's where we're at and if we pull it off, it'll be pretty amazing and it's it's tomorrow, it's tomorrow at ten thirty, right?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, tomorrow's Thursday, tomorrow's ten thirty.
Over in Deegan.
So. Um.
You know, last week. So. That was all over the communications. It was there.
Well, I think, uh, the good thing is is that, um, Marco has agreed to, um, if we need a, if. How, if for some reason major flood came through here and a major. Catastrophic issue happened over this, so there's systems with that. Two things can happen, one is Concord. Can actually, uh, is set up to take our calls and we're set up to take Congress calls, they have the same issue. But at the same time, you want to have some type of another scenario situation set up where you can take laptops and set up. The room that's being built by the fire department expansion that they're doing is going to allow us to have. That capability where we can take laptops, go to, go to. The, uh, Ballpool Fire Department and go into a room that will set up with everything it needs. And that would be a backup in person lamp, uh, situation. So that's good, it could happen, we could do it anywhere, but. Mark offered up the services with the construction that they're gonna be doing.
I wrote a, I wrote a grant support letter for him. Good way back. That's surprising.
Now, I think that goes for people, the voters this week. Uh, on the twenty first.
Twenty first of the.
So, you know. Again, you know, we're we're slowly getting there, um. And I really, I tell everybody, if for some reason congressional doesn't work out, that's fine. But what we've done is now brought everybody up to speed of where we're at. And the Homeland Security, uh, grant, it goes on cycles, so this, uh, this September, October. We will be ready to submit at that point. They told us it was a soft now because we didn't have this business, we're taking care of this business. So they they don't have a hard time not saying yes to us this time around and they're very appreciative and. The director of Homeland Security is coming to our meeting. They believe in what we're doing and it doesn't hurt that Concord is doing the same thing we're doing. And we're partners, if our system goes down, same thing happens. And so, and the Lakes Region is partnered with Concord and if you look at that, that's forty percent of the population of the state of Hampshire. So. Well, well, hopefully.
How how are we anticipating that that's gonna integrate with the Sheriff's Department, State Dispatch and other things, is there any crossover?
You know, I I'm not sure, I'm not sure. Um, I think we share a few sites. And, no, I know we share, no, sorry, operation, uh, operationally, I don't think it will, it will affect anything. We, uh, a few, some years ago, the commissioners, uh, we had a frequent fire frequency here. That we gave over to them, they had it. So. I don't really know how it would affect. At all. Um, and I've been asked to talk about county at a, at a class at King State College on Friday, so I'll be going down and. Talking, I've had a tutor this week and Cheryl's been. Been just drilling into my head all the processes of when, uh, my town taxes are evaluated, how towns get their. So I think we're good, um, next week is the gala. Um, I hope people can on Thursday, uh, I hope people can attend, you are, you are registered to go. It's, uh, we have, the gala itself officially opens at five thirty since we're sponsored, we're in at five o'clock. You all have a table.
Um, so next Thursday is the twenty first.
Hmm.
Next Thursday is the twenty first.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's my meeting with our district. Um, to get the E O C money.
Um.
Yeah, and I get, I get Troy.
What, what time is the gala?
Five, seven, eight, seven.
Seven thirty, yeah, you can come for a bit, you can.
I I might be able to do that because I think the, um. Because I'm a moderator, I have a role at that district meeting.
Yeah.
To authorize to borrow eight hundred thousand out of that full project because I get like a million. Eight. The million eighty on a FEMA grant, we've got another bundle of money. Covered somewhere else, so they have to, they still have to raise about eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, they have to do twenty five percent, right, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so.
Okay.
But so it's possible.
Yeah.
Possible.
Uh, this week I want.
It's a.
It's a, it's more than I can imagine. This week. Okay. I'm not sure, yeah, I think it's great that you're, you'll be there, it's, I I think they. I think the chamber is very appreciative of you guys.
I mean, we've, we've got deep in there, kind of given an expand, oppressive region. Impressive.
But what's exciting is it is. Well, you talk about businesses being, businesses being invested, right, if you get a hundred thousand and we're doing totally payments for the money's raised and so on. Looking forward to seeing how much money they've raised so far. Um, last I knew was probably, this was early on and they were heading towards twenty five thousand. I think they now are heading towards the fifty thousand, I feel. They really have a goal of like June or July to have a hundred, a hundred thousand raised, so. And Jamie Trover is the one that's really been pushing this baby, so. Lead services.
They'd be a good partner. Immigration resettlement as well.
Oh, I don't disagree.
In terms of building collaborative base.
Yeah.
I mean.
In partnership.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're gonna need to fill that third floor of the in campus.
That picture. Hmm.
John.
So, um. Fleet Services, um, last week I talked to you about meeting with the city of Keene and their Fleet Service Manager. Uh, this week, we uh, met with uh, in the Enterprise Fleet Service Management Systems. Uh, it was actually a really good conversation, Enterprise runs this whole fleet program.
Sure, example.
Yeah, and, but they do, I mean, they, they, I mean, City Manchester, you know, they do housing authorities, you name it, they do all kinds of different places. And the, and so uh, there, we're, we're gonna keep doing a little bit more research, but we are going to have actually. The, the, the Fleet Service Manager that we talked to yesterday. Actually do a call with you all, so he can present the model he presented yesterday, it was interesting. The level of, of, yeah, of, of what they can do for us, it's not just about purchasing, it's, it's about me, it's about.
Do we even have logbooks on our vehicles?
Uh, development.
I mean, if you, well, no, it was no.
Yes, that's right, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I think. Uh, out of deference to some of the department managers, but not all of them. Uh, they don't get the maintenance, I think, at a PM level that I think they should. Uh, maybe with a little more adherent, I'll say Sheriff's Department isn't because they like to check all the vehicles. You know, for example, one of the vehicles I inherited from Sheriff's Department pretty mess. Which is a bare mediator set vehicle, which, when I took it in for review, it hit about five thousand dollars worth of work, but they're still the cheapest. Vehicle, but warranty work.
Two years old, every, that wouldn't cost anything, we didn't make them that sometimes.
Well, so, yeah, because it's not in anybody's interest. To have all the. Doctor bed. Uh, so we might actually see an extended life on the side of it, if they're a little uncoordinated.
Well, sure, yeah, well, sure, they have a logbook and somebody goes through it. You, you're gonna get a flag come up every, every day, I mean.
So, I, I think it's worth closing. They've only sensitivity, I have it as we do. Spin off a lot of business to local. Yeah, both.
We would still have to have a, a local contractor.
Oh, yeah, we're not.
Uh, yeah.
No, 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 but, you know, I know that, uh, this one in the Sheriff's Department, they like when the vendors maybe would have.
It's better even for businesses, because then we could have contact for oil changes, right?
I was, I was, I was, I was at a meeting, a breakfast meeting yesterday at the chamber, there was about thirty five people there, I was sitting next to Frank Tbrisby. Uh, Thomas Travel, uh, Thomas Transportation. And so we got talking to him, and he's like, I'd be more than willing to come over and talk to you about what we do and we go about our, our work. You know, they've got multiple vehicles, even though they closed, even though they closed the facility.
Yeah.
Now they're located in a penny building down by the airport, and they've also utilized. I'm guessing a hangar or so or something, um, they're using, but he said we have vehicles that park at the airport too, maybe they're outside. Maybe they're outside parked.
Well, they, they might be inside, but the, the, the problem issue about background is. The FAA will let you use it for non aviation purposes, but if aviation pur- purposes present themselves, you have to throw them out.
Yeah.
So it's not a long term.
No, I just, I'm just bringing it up because everybody, because they sold the building. And they sold the business, but the business was bought by a family that's continuing the business, they just moved it.
I didn't even.
And I didn't know that.
I didn't.
And they got rid of all the limousine service, they said it just wasn't a money maker. It's sea, it's, it's not even seasonal, it's, it's moment.
Yeah.
You know?
And, and it wasn't inexpensive.
Yeah.
Spend, because they're on all.
Yeah, I mean, even in, even adventure uh. You know, adventure limousine attacks, you know that? A lot of their limousines, uh, he was saying, are owned by other people that. They, they, they won't, they, it's like a.
So.
Yeah, like, like, like somebody can rent out and they uh, they, they're facilitating that, that, that management of it. And the other person gets the rest where they're part of the riders. So I'm, yeah. Surprised. Um. Do you wanna talk anything about uh, in reference to, you know, community power? I think it's important that we keep it at the forefront.
Yeah, well, uh, tonight, uh, is the first meeting of our uh, Cheshire Community Power Governance Committee, which means the members of those member towns. Dublin, Roxbury, Fitzwilliam, Nelson for tonight. And we're gonna be talking about starting a program uh, to uh. Entice people within those communities to opt up from the, just, you know, the default rate. Of, you know, the mix of how much renewable energy content you have. And also for other communities, individuals who live in the communities to opt in to Cheshire. Freedom Power, uh, not as a town, but as individuals, if you happen to be in a town that's stuck with one of those um, expensive uh. You know, contracts, and you know, individuals can come in, whatever. Uh, next morning, I would want to speak to Board of Selectmen in Troy. To uh, try to see if they would like to join us. Um. Yeah, last week I spoke to Elsted. And. They're, they're interested, but they uh, they wanted to put it on their, on their warrant. That's, that's like this week, so they can't. Um, there's, you know, there's, there's a question that. Even though they're enabled by legislation, the Board of Selectmen are enabled by legislation to uh, uh, sign up their residents into community power. Without having a town meeting, there's still selectmen who have this thing, but. No, we're not gonna make the decision for all of the town, which doesn't make any sense to me, because why do you have a board to select if not to make decisions for the town?
Mm-hmm.
But. Any case, uh, there, you always have, in these small towns, some of these people are very liberty conscious. So, but they are going to uh, start a, a bit of a campaign at the town offices to try to entice people to sign up individually. It'd be a slower process, but that's one of the things that we're gonna be talking about uh, tonight on. On, or, and how, how we're gonna put that together, Henry's gonna be there, and Patch is gonna be there. Uh, and we're gonna coordinate this whole thing as a template uh, through C D C and H. So uh, because we are the county leader, I guess, we, we have our own template, you know, and that, that. Wasn't included in the original legislation, then we have to continue to put together elements and procedures uh. For counties. That towns don't have to worry about.
Mm-hmm.
That's.
And, and like I told you, I'll be in and out if I, if I get out, because I have to go over to that meeting too.
Where is that meeting? Meeting hall, is it gonna be in the hall or is it gonna be here?
It's up to you, um, the recording in the hall works really well, the audio is good, um.
It's not, not gonna be many people in person, so uh.
And I mean, the owls also record really well, so if you want it.
Yeah, I like it better.
There will be. Anything goes wrong, this one will be a lot easier, I'll just.
Because over there, that's what they call you, that is that.
If one and only thing, actually, I guess I could probably bring the laptops in there and here for you.
Or you can just.
Leave mine.
Yours too, okay.
Yeah, so I'll.
I just need to plug it in and energize it during the day.
Oh, I can probably leave it plugged in, so it doesn't die, so I'll have the meeting set up for you, um, all we have to do is probably. Um, press start video and.
Well, I'd like, like, ten minutes with you after this meeting, so that you, you know, so I can share screens and all that.
Sure.
Very.
Absolutely. Okay, good. All right, um, you just reminded the Keene delegation meeting is um, March twenty sixth. At six P M at Heberton Hall. And the pass has gone over at City Hall. Uh, but they're, but they're moving it because it's just being crowded over there, so uh, they're moving it over to Heberton Hall.
That's which then, which meeting you get?
That is the city, you know how the city pulls together towns and they bring in the.
Business Association.
Yeah, you know, and they talk about the bill, it could be affecting things, and all that, and the mayor probably say a few words and. Don't know. That's when there'll probably be questions to us at some point about some of that.
Okay. That's on the twenty sixth, it's a Tuesday.
Yes. Yeah. That's all I have, um. So. Oh, yeah, no, I'm not gonna do it. Is there any old business? Is there any new business?
The only new business I have, and Jack is aware, is I need to sign some governance letter for the audit.
Okay, there is. Do you just need to sign some documents for Cheryl?
So that's the governance from your name is there, and then we, what is it called, the engagement letter, they've already done audits.
Yeah, I saw that.
Um. See no old business or new business, then a vote to accept a weekly manifest, the minute of March sixth, twenty twenty four.
So, second.
Okay. Commissioner Wozmac.
Hi.
Commissioner England and Commissioner Clark. Uh, any calendar thing, Davis, that needs to be brought up?
Uh, no changes recently, uh, just again, March twentieth next week, um, we'll have the mayor and we'll be at C C E N S again. And I can give you all the code or we can wait for you downstairs like last time, but same location.
Yeah. And their people.
Don't say it.
Oh, yeah, I don't wanna say it, yeah, so I will, I will, um, send you guys.
Do the people there, one of four seven?
There are other, sometimes not directly in the, it's in the, oh, no, you're online, it's in the garage upstairs, so sometimes there aren't people in there, uh, but we'll.
Oh, and the.
Exactly.
Somebody will need waiting, Brian.
Yeah, we have to wait for the mayor to out there, so we'll just make sure everybody can get in, so you don't need the code anyway, actually. But I think.
Uh, I do have some old business.
What's the old business?
The old business is.
Thank you.
Um, the bottle. Uh, potentially kind of talk, talk about it online, but I, I sent it out to.
It was, we can.
And uh. They said it was compelling. But they said, you really should fix the typos.
Okay.
Uh, and their other comment was. We, we called it a response to a federal complaint. And their reaction was. Did the feds accuse you of something? As she, and they said, you might wanna think about kind of rephrasing, because it's not a federal complaint.
True.
And, and I, you know, we've seen this drive so many times, we, we can't really proofread it. So I, I um, talked to Bob and, and, and uh. I asked him to have Dieter review it, because Dieter, you used to actually do a lot of editing and proofreading.
She's one of the worst right there. Red pen, all kinds of flatbacks.
But it's, but it's, uh, but it's been great, it's been profoundly helpful, because tend to kick our scraps so long, so my, we can't edit all.
Well, it was something that Barry uh, Partner, we did the letter, we, we put together the letter, and he said that he had sent us back the uh. The, some edits, uh, some typo edits that he, we wanted, he wanted to, and we, we looked through it, we looked through it, and we couldn't see that he had sent us to it, and then finally it came through.
There's two of us read it from, from.
I thought it was so obvious, we didn't see it.
I know, I know, I, I did the same thing, it, it wasn't until I actually. Sent this out for, for this, this impartial trustee. To realize, oh, I, I even saw one of the titles. Uh, so I don't even know where the others are.
Yeah.
Uh, but um. But if Dieter's open to that, I, I think it'd be great for her to get seats, so that'd be the summary document, and perhaps the longer, because I haven't even seen the long one.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, you, you have the long one. From now, from a while back, hasn't changed much, so we.
We went.
About the twenty days.
Yeah, we said it to you, but we did make some changes, but it was very little things.
Oh, it was those little ones on that.
I, I changed some words in there, nothing major, but we can send all those to you, of course, we'll just go through it, and then we can add that.
Send them both to.
Because what I like about it, not emotional, factually based response.
And let's think about the language.
Uh, yeah, we don't stand it.
And a little different wording, I don't even remember where it is.
For the title specifically?
Yeah, it's sort of federal investigation, because that, that, that does sound like we're getting investigated.
Yeah, and we know that's not true, so it's really a. List. Let's try to call it what it is, it's a complaint by a former Dulusio employee.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Something like that.
Yeah.
But let's, let's try to mute that a little bit, so it doesn't look as though we're actually responding to a federal complaint, because of course, you know, that's not true.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, great, I'll make those changes and send them to you.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah, because that, that, that person said it was a compelling response.
Yeah.
Uh, because they had reached out to me, uh, saying, asking if there's really anything to this. And I said, of course, no. But we had, we hadn't uh, kind of drafted this, this response yet. So.
Okay, great. So uh, at this point, all we have left is a motion to adjourn.
So most of it.
All right. Commissioner Wozmac, yes.
Hi.
All right, Commissioner England.
I.
And Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
All right.
We are adjourned at this point, huh?
Um, Cheryl, can you stay on for a quick question or? Give me a call? Yeah, Cheryl. Have a quick question.
You have a, do you want us in the room when you do it?
No, it doesn't matter, um. You can.
Okay. And we are on an agenda.
Well, this is not commissioners anymore, he's just simply asking me a question that.